Well, good morning. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Coachella. Today's date is June 27, 2023. And I know we have an agenda here. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll complete.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco may arrive later. We'll note for the record if he does. And Director Aguilar will be absent for today's meeting. And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm personally going to have to leave around 9:45.
We'll leave at that time.
It might break the quorum. So I don't know how far we're going to get into closed session, but maybe we'll be done. Who knows? Are there any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir.
Right. Is there anyone from the public wishing to make comment at this time?
Apparently not in the room.
Let me just check on Zoom. If we have any members of the public on Zoom that would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature at this time. And I do not see any this time.
Okay. Well, we'll circle back if we find that we had somebody. Onto 5A, employee recognition. We have one retirement, Francisco Lopez, with 16 years. And then we have three anniversaries, all of them 20 years. Brad Porras, Luis Cervantes, and Jason Caston. So congratulations to all of them. I don't think anyone's here. Is anyone here, that group? No. So congratulations to them. Onto the consent calendar, items 6A through I. Didn't see anything that comes out. If there's no objections, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'd like to just make a comment or a question on G.
Guess we have to pull it down.
Let's do that. Would you amend your motion? Yeah. I'll move the consent calendar with the exception of item G.
And my question is...
Can we have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Then on to G, 6G.
That'll be fast.
Okay.
Is this the policy that we saw last time we spoke about, that huge long list of, I mean, policy changes that we're looking for reserve?
Director Estrada, your mic, please. Thank you.
Yes. This policy is the same one that was reflected in the long list, and the board had directed just to focus on the state water project policy. So those are the only changes to the reserve policy reflected here.
And that was just the recommendation to keep at the, was it at the 11 cents?
Yes. Yes. So this is the reserve policy that changes the target level of the cash balance, moving that up. But it goes hand in hand with the recommendation to keep the 11 cents.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the item G?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 3-0. See, we're moving now.
It's going to be done by 9:45.
8A, we're onto the action calendar. Engineering. There's a grant request, I mean, sorry, grant request of Van Dyke to withdraw their bid. So I'm sure you have an explanation for this.
My screen.
I noticed it was quite a bit lower than the others.
Yes, so pursuant to public contract code 5103, they did withdraw their bid. We did have legal take a look at that, and it is acceptable.
Okay. So then the remainder is to authorize General Manager to execute a contract with MNR for the North Shore Water Main Replacement and Dale Kyler Road Water Main Replacement Projects.
Yes, that's correct. So we recommend that the board grant the request of Van Dyke Corporation, the parent low bidder, to withdraw their bid and then to award to MNR Construction an amount of $16,207,270, with an additional expenditure and the total request of $18,435,740.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Was, was, do they give a reason when they withdraw their bid? I mean, was there a reason given, or do they...
They did. So their bid amounts, they had made an error. So they were $3 million lower than the second lowest. The lowest bid was $13 million. The highest bid was $20 million. Everywhere in between was $16 to $18 million.
Right.
So they certainly did make a mistake. There were some insurance issues as well.
And there's a deadline for them to do so. It's not like if they can just wait and say, oh, by the way, we want out. Five days.
I mean, do they see all the other bids before they pull off?
Because it's a public bid open.
That's probably what led them to believe maybe they were off when they saw everyone was...
I'm sure there's a group up here and then there was down here. I'm sure they catch a clue.
Yeah, that's probably what it was. Okay.
Is it an actual mistake from a spreadsheet that they calculate a wrong item?
They did not identify which bid items were too low. We do understand that there was some concern on their part with the insurance costs, that they misedimated how much that cost would actually be.
Interesting.
Thank you.
$3 million. Good. All right. There's a motion and a second to approve this item. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries 3-0. Thank you. Environmental Services.
Just on that last item, there was an attachment from the Van Dyke Corporation that was way down below that you may not have been able to see. It says, "After further review of our proposal submitted June 1st, we've discovered an error, the error being that our initial spreadsheet did not reflect the total man-hours figured to complete the project. The error is reflected in the total bid price, and thus this mistake should be added to the total computation for our total bid. In view of the error involved, we hereby respectfully request permission to immediately withdraw our bid from consideration."
Perfect. Yeah, I didn't see that line. Yeah, thanks. All right. So on to 8B. William, go ahead.
Sequa. Good morning. Today, we're asking for your certification of the environmental review for the North Cathedral City Regional Flood Control Project. And that includes the adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and the authorization to file notice of determination to complete SEQA for the project. Just want to say, this project initially began in 2016, so today is a big milestone to deliver the project for CVWD. Just wanted to thank you for all your support over the years in funding this effort. It's been a complicated effort, and we're in a joint document with BLM. And coordinating with BLM is part of the timeline that has transpired. So this, this project is a mitigated negative declaration, which includes mitigation measures to reduce all the impacts from the project to less than significant. This, this project included six technical appendices. We've also gone through Section 7 consultation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for impacts to BLM lands, and it's included a biological opinion that's included. We've also had a lot of coordination with the CBCC, Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, like exchange and equivalency analysis to identify coverage under the CBMS HCP and the compensatory mitigation measures that are required. We've also had a public review under SEQA. We went out to a 30-day public review period, which resulted in three comment letters, which have been addressed, and those responses have been shared with the commenters. So with that, what I wanted to do was give you the option of having the presentation shown for the project and the environmental review. That's a standard 10-slide presentation that we always present for the Board of Directors. But all those materials were available ahead of time. The PowerPoint is just a summary. So if you've been able to review all those materials and you're comfortable with the information that's provided there, I can go ahead and answer any questions. So I'll stop there and take any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't have any questions.
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve 8B?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed 4-0.
Thanks, William.
Thank you.
3-0, sorry. Counting Aguilar, because he's the Cathedral City guy. Good. All right. Good morning. Go ahead. See.
Morning. So I'm very glad to be able to bring this item forward for your consideration in what amounts to the next big step in a multi-year effort that you all have seen before relating to our financial systems, both the financial and billing systems, to find a solution for their limitations, to find greater efficiencies in our processes. And so this specific request is to get permission to release the request for proposals so that we finally get firm numbers on what it would take and what our real options are to actually upgrade or replace the systems. And so that's a specific request to issue the RFP. And with that, I did want to take a little time to reintroduce our new controller, Carla Romero, who's taken lead on coordinating with the other departments and her consultant. And not only does she have a lot of extensive experience in our same financial system, but in actually doing this very thing of selecting, procuring, and implementing new systems. And so with that, Carla, if you wanted to present?
You know, and just, yeah, welcome.
Very brief.
Just had a, you know, my concern here, as we, as this came up in the strategic planning a while back, was that, you know, we can't do everything all at once, and maybe this was too soon. But it has been a while now, and how much longer is it going to take to get through this process before we kind of have this disruptive changeover of our system?
Implementation, yes. So the current process began in 2019, when SDI presence was selected to do a gap analysis. They presented that gap analysis in 2020, and basically, the bottom line was that there's 46 functional gaps and that we should consider implementing a new system. So that's where that gap analysis... Today, we're in the procurement phase, where we have drafted an RFP. We have a scope of about 900 items that we would like to see in a new system, and we're ready to release that RFP in order to get quotes, as Director Aragon mentioned. The implementation, or the procurement phase to select a vendor is anticipated to take about nine months. So between releasing the RFP, evaluating, answering vendor questions, really going into contract negotiations if the pricing looks good, it's multiple systems, multiple departments, and so we would need a lot of integration and support from everyone to do that. So we wouldn't anticipate bringing back a contract till about April of 2024, if all goes well. And then the actual implementation would take four to five years after that point in time.
And we have the resources to get through that process?
You know, we feel really confident within the finance department. There's about six of us that have gone through an implementation process or used other systems in other agencies. And so we do feel really confident that we're able to do it, put together a solid plan. Like you said, it's not going to be done overnight. And so we would need to have maybe some additional external resources to have continuity in our operations. And so that would all be part of the scope of service and costs that we would need to evaluate.
Could you highlight a couple of the functional gaps, or examples of, that affect the system, why we need to replace it?
Sure. So the current system was originally developed in 1980, 1990s. I used this system 17 years ago when I first started in city government in the city of Indio. And so the current system does have an upgraded version, but we are currently on that older nobby line version that has very limited system upgrade capabilities. There is a lot of clicking, a lot of inefficient processes, manual processes that are currently done throughout the different systems. Users aren't able to, for example, have document storage within the system. It's outside of the system. There's, there's a lot of more kind of search capability, analytical reporting capabilities in a newer system. And so staff is really excited about the potential of having a system that can really give them data to deliver to both the public and to you as a board.
Yeah. Okay. What, what types of systems would be considered in a new system?
So we have been monitoring other agencies that are going through the same process. We've been talking to Eastern Municipal Water District. They are down to two systems that they are considering. It's either Workday or Tyler Technologies. Other local agencies, such as the city of Antrim Raj, Indio, have recently implemented a Tyler Technology system. They are one of the leading competitors. Doesn't mean that we would necessarily fit into that realm, but we are monitoring other agencies, especially water agencies, that are currently going through the procurement phase.
Yeah. So I was at the city of San Diego when they implemented an ERP, and they went with SAIC, which is a very open architecture. And the challenge is, as you work with staff and the software developers, to try and keep some type of constraint on the wants versus the needs. Because you can spend a lot of money getting their system designed to fit your wants instead of your needs. And it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. But typically, you know, and then there were customer billing problems after the system was implemented. Same thing happened with IID. They went with SAIC, and they had some pretty significant problems with their customer interface as well. So I've kind of told the staff that my preference would be to get something that's commercially off the shelf. Don't try and redesign their software to meet our business processes. Let's make sure we look at our business processes first to fit the software capability. Because I don't, you can go down many rabbit holes during this process. And, you know, quite honestly, the vendors are incentivized to do exactly what you want them to do. And there's like, Katie bar the door, you know, they'll actually help you do things that may not actually be in your best interest from a financial standpoint. But, and I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to make it too dark.
No, but that, I think those are really good comments. So, yeah. Proceed with caution.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, we get so used to our, you have 45 gaps. I'm sure we love, love each one of them equally. But you get used to them, right? I mean, you work around and you get good, we get good at it. And hopefully, we're not going to, yeah, I mean, I think we can get good at functioning within their off-the-shelf system also, if that makes sense. Good. All right. So are we ready to do this? You okay with this, Jim?
I'm okay, sir. I mean, I have, I have cautioned staff that I didn't want to start this until we got through the CMMS, you know, the SCADA, the asset management, which is CMMS and SCADA. And I think we're pretty well done with those. I mean, we haven't actually launched completely. We're still kind of learning how those systems work. We still have parts and pieces to kind of update, but absolutely, this is, this was the next thing we needed to do. So I can't say I'm really excited about it. I wish we didn't have to do it, but it's gotten to the point where we don't have a whole lot of options.
Great. All right. So is there a motion to approve this going out to bid on the ERP?
I could make the motion, but...
I'll move that we go out for the RFP.
I'll second.
Okay. Go out for the bids, right?
Yes. We'll bring it back before we're...
Yeah. And so we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's passed 3-0.
Thanks, Carla.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Yeah. All right. And then D, Victoria, see you moving. Reconsideration of our position on SB 583. This is the Salton Sea Conservancy. Go ahead.
Yes. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So what we have for you today is a reconsideration of CVWD's position on SB 583 by State Senator Padilla, the Salton Sea Conservancy bill. And just for a little bit of background and history, so the board first adopted a opposed position to SB 583 at the May 9th Board of Directors meeting. And since then, we have met with Senator Padilla. We met with him last week. Yourself and Vice President Estrada, as well as General Manager Barrett were present. And I think we were able to have some good conversation with the senator. So yesterday, the Assembly Committee for Natural Resources met, and SB 583 was heard. Part of your packet is the committee analysis on the bill. And it passed, it passed the committee. And as you'll see in the background, there were certain amendments that were suggested by the committee for the author, and the author did accept those amendments. So what we bring for you today as a result of those amendments, and also a particular section of the analysis, the governing board section, I believe it was number nine within the committee analysis, related to the governing board. I believe we can, staff believes in our recommendation is to move to a support if amended position. And the if amended part, you know, we do want to wait and see what the red line version of the bill looks like before moving to a full support, should the board choose to go that way. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions if we have any.
And Mr. President, if I may add, revised copies of a staff report and attachments are just, were distributed to the board and will be made available to the public as well.
Thank you.
So I'll start off with some comments. I do agree that we've made a lot of progress with the Senator's office. We've been in constant communication with him and his staff, I think, since we last had our phone call. And even before that, we were kind of touching base. We've been involved with this office as this bill also kind of continues to move through some of the local agencies, whether it be us at CVWD, whether it was at C-VAG and some of their committees. And I think that one of the obvious setbacks for the office was, what came out of that C-VAG committee, which I think it was very apparent that there needed to be a little bit more coordination. And so that's all happening, and I think a lot of us are very happy that that's happening. Yesterday, I think C-VAG was also looking to take a position on this bill with hopes that it could support it. But they tabled it because, again, the, although there's been comments made that language is going to be rolled into the bill, we, nobody had an actual copy of what that, what those amendments were. The Salton Sea Authority is also, has been in constant communication with the Senator's office. And they, the Salton Sea Authority seems to be the agency that's kind of at the forefront of what's going to be what gets us to support. And I think C-VAG, I think a lot of other folks are kind of looking at the Salton Sea Authority as kind of being the, okay, everything's good, then we're all good. So the Salton Sea Authority is also, I think, looking to get to a support. I heard that yesterday, Executive Director O'Dowd might have made some comments at the hearing.
Yes.
He expressed, it doesn't sound like he expressed opposition.
It was a little bit of a nuanced position. He expressed that the authority was in an oppose unless amended position, but was supportive of the bill coming out of committee.
Yeah. And I think that was with the kind of signaling that we're making progress, but there's still maybe one thing that needs to be figured out. But, but we are talking to the Senator's office, so we think that it's going to get figured out. So my recommendation would be that, that we, if there's a way that we can table this until we have some sort of version of language that we know has been rolled into the bill and might help me understand if, although, although some language was moved through the committee, it doesn't get rewritten until a few days after it moves through committee? Or at what point does, does the legislature print out a new bill?
Sure. We have Cyrus on the line, so if I could tap him in to talk more about the procedure. But also, right before we go to that, I did just want to also address, and I forgot it in the background, but we, in our position of support, in our opposition letter, there were four points that were called out. I think we can say two of those key points related to water quality and the overlapping jurisdictions have been addressed. So I think we were really happy to see that, and staff as well. So I just wanted to point that out for the other board members. But Cyrus, are you available to talk to the process of language?
Can you hear me?
Yes, but you're very faint.
I will speak up.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah. So the typical process, which I assume this bill will follow, is amendments agreed to in committee, in policy committee, will then be adopted in the appropriations committee to follow. So the bill passed out of committee 10 to 0, and it's now up to appropriations where the, both the committee amendments and any further amendments discussed can be taken. And I think in support of the staff report, I'd point out that in our phone call with Senator Padilla, we indicated support if amended, if the governance structure could be addressed, specifically the Salton Sea Authority structure being incorporated into the Conservancy. And to the reading of Victoria and I, it appears that the staff recommendation coincides with that. We do need to see it, but it does indicate that it would fulfill the condition that I heard communicated to Senator Padilla on our phone call. So of course, support if amended means we wouldn't, we don't support it now, but that we would support it in the future if this condition is satisfied. So I think that's what rolled up into a staff report you see before you from Victoria.
I think one of the issues that the board might consider is the fact that, right now, CVWD is on record as opposed. So tabling this item leaves us in an opposed position. Despite all of the conversation and understandings that we have, and to the point that Cyrus just made, we did indicate that we would be in a support if amended position. So if we don't do anything today, we will technically still be opposed. And that may or may not be seen as a problem.
And also, if we didn't feel comfortable with a full support if amended, to General Manager's point, we should remove our opposition and possibly at least go to a watch position. But I don't think that staff's recommendation would not to be, not to remain in an opposed position.
Is this bill going to slow down over the summer just because of recess or anything like, does it get scheduled such that it...
I believe the policy deadline is right before the summer recess. Is that correct, Cyrus? And then when they come back, they go into appropriations?
I, so it just came out. I don't know how fast they want to move it. But yeah, having met its policy deadline, it now has, you know, more time. They could potentially move it along and hear it before the summer recess. Summer recess doesn't start until July 14.
So I know that we communicated some thoughts to the Senator's office, to the Senator in particular. And I think that one of the biggest points that I personally tried to make was the issue with the governance, which seems to have been addressed. There is, however, one last issue that seems to be pending with the Salton Sea Authority. And that particular issue is the one that I think held off C-VAG from taking a support position yesterday. And instead, they've decided to table it so that when it comes back... And instead, they've decided to table it so that when it comes back, hopefully it comes back with that one more revision that the Salt and Sea Authority is working to embed into the language. It doesn't sound like it's going to be a heavy lift to roll that particular sentence into that language. And what I'm trying to avoid is getting ahead of that, cannot give those conversations a time to kind of get to a final point, and then us kind of jump the gun on it. I'm not, I'm not.
What is that, do you know what that item is?
I don't. What is that remaining issue?
So I was trying to get a sense of that yesterday because it was the first time that I heard about it yesterday. Yesterday, there was a conversation between supervisor staff, press, the Salt and Sea Authority, and myself. And I had expressed to them that we had a conversation with the Senator's office that went well. And that it was, in my opinion, we, we were ready to, you know, we were ready to support this, that. I mean, everything you just said is what I said. You know, we, I've expressed something. This gets us there. What is this thing that you aren't happy with? And I was supposed to get that, that language. And I think it's, it's related to the bill making it more clear that there are some responsibilities that are specific to the, to the inner shoreline of the sea versus outside the sea for projects that are kind of community projects in and around the sea. And then who would have responsibility for that? Because it might tie to the EIFD that the county's pushing for. And so it was, it was some of that. I don't, I'm not too clear on it. So I am open to move this along if there is a way that we can take the position that you're recommending, but at the same time, continue to advocate for these additional amendments that I think are being sought from at least C-VAG and the Salt and Sea Authority. So I don't, what I don't want to get, I don't want to get into a position where it's, okay, well, we're all good. You know, you guys have an issue, you guys have an issue, and, and we're all good.
Well, I will say that the support if amended position is not a straight support. And if I may really quickly, just from the ledge platform, so the support if amended position, it clearly states that staff and ledge advocates will not advocate in support of the legislation unless it's amended as requested by CBWD. So it's not a full support. We can also continue to work with the agencies and actors that you mentioned in trying to secure the amendments that they're seeking. But.
I think it's difficult for us to, having had a discussion directly with the Senator and asked for specific changes to be included, to have those changes included and then not support because someone else is trying to lobby for their amendments kind of compromises our ability to continue working with the Senator on future issues. We have made a request. That request has been included. Just because others now have their requests, I appreciate the fact that we don't want to come out in a full support because the bill language is not final. But we have made a request and it has been, it's been handled.
So, so it's not, it's not us versus them. It's, this is a regional issue. We are part of the Salt and Sea Authority.
We made a request.
Well, we made a request and, and what, look, this conversation is moving pretty fast. And, and we've been chasing this bill around. And, and what, and the request that I was able to formulate at that meeting was not all encompassing of all the issues.
I appreciate that, but we did make an ask and the ask was, was attended to. I think, you know, if we're always going to be following somebody else.
We're not following someone else.
Yeah, we are.
Well, this is my own opinion. I'm not following, this is my, this is my personal decision on how I feel about this bill. It's not someone else.
But, but the problem is, we can't articulate what it is that we want included. We are waiting on someone else to make that articulation.
We did say that we would vote to support if amended if he included those things, and he did. I mean, and we said we would do it today. I don't think it hurts us. I mean, as long as we're clear that the amendment that we're asking for is, you know, is not exactly what's already in there, that we don't know what's in there, that.
Right. And being that we haven't seen the final red line version, that's why staff recommended just a support if amended because we want to reserve the right should those amendments not encompass everything that we were originally looking for, the ability to go back and renegotiate with the author.
I, look, I, I know what I said. I know where I was coming from. And I want to support this bill. But I also want us to coordinate with the Salt and Sea Authority and our other regional partners to make sure that we're working together on what we need to do with this bill. So if you can commit, if staff can commit, Jim, if you can commit that staff is going to continue to work with our regional partners and not take this as a, we got what we wanted, that's their request, that's not our issue, then I'd like to move on staff's recommendation. But, but we have to continue to work with our regional partners.
I think that's absolutely what we intend to do. I think we've been committed to that from the beginning. I think what happens though is that we wind up wanting to please a number of different people who may or may not be aligned the same way we are. And I think that's fine. But I think also at some point, we have to put our stake in the ground and say, this is what we wanted. We're not going to get everything we want. But we did ask for this. It's in there. And I think, you know, as long as we're able to work with others and not compromise the position that we're in, I think we have a responsibility to help move this along.
And I would say that I've been the one that's been the hardest on this in asking for, you know, certain changes. And I think.
The ones we asked for were included.
We got, yeah, we got. So look, let's, I'll make a motion for staff's recommendation. But please make sure you continue to connect with Salt and Sea Authority, with C-VAG. And if there's something we can do to continue to promote those ideas, that we express those.
Absolutely.
You know, on a one-on-one with staff.
Absolutely.
I'll second that. Yeah, well said. If there's any question about what we really mean, they can watch the video. It'll be clear. Okay, so, except we still don't really know what the language is.
No, we don't.
That's kind of the big, the big thing, yeah.
And we'll know when it gets, you said it'll get released at appropriations or?
Yeah. And then at that time, we can, I can work with Sylvia and get that circulated to the board.
Well, don't we already know what the, what the language is?
The intent of the language.
What the ask, the additional ask is.
We know the intent of the language, but we don't know the actual final language.
They haven't.
They've made suggested amendments.
Okay, so there's two issues here, right?
Yeah.
We don't know what the ask is.
Correct. And then what?
And then we don't know what the final language is.
What the final language is for what we've asked for.
That's why we have an open position.
And the, the final language comes out in two weeks, in a month?
It all, it all depends when it might be heard for appropriations.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we do have, yeah, I appreciate that. Good discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More to come, right?
Absolutely.
Information reports, was there anything?
Correspondence log?
Was there something?
You know what I apologize, we just had that one, did it come in?
Okay.
And I had tweaked some language.
Right, we did have one come in. We sent it to HR for further review.
Yeah, we can throw.
It doesn't appear that there's anything that we can actually do at this point.
Fair enough. So on to board member general comments, Director Nelson.
Oh wow, we're already there. John, you're moving fast. Bing, bing, bing. No, only comment is, it's pretty amazing that Article 21 has continued through July 4th. And I guess there's a suspension of through the 5th through the 11th, so it looks like it's slowing down. I know there were some operational issues at San Luis Reservoir, and we're going to refill it. So some of that uncontrolled water is going to go there. So it might come back, who knows? And there's some forecast for fall, Article 21. So it's pretty interesting, and I, I think that some of the concern is that going into next year with El Nino now official, with a potential of wetter seasons that will have, we and MET, our agent, will have a fair amount of carryover in San Luis reservoirs susceptible to spill after the first of the year, so.
Did you write all that down, Rick?
So anyway, those were my only comments. Pretty amazing that Lake Mead, I've seen some forecasts up to 1070 potentially. I'm still sticking with my 1066 forecast from a while back. Lake level, so that's all goodness.
Thank you. Vice President Estrada.
Just wanted to mention that we, we have our meeting with EPA and a bunch of other regional folks. It's a meeting that we've been having at least, I don't know if it's quarterly now.
Quarterly, yeah.
Quarterly now, but it's related to the Oasis issue out on Avenue 70. So we've been meeting with our counterparts at the state level, federal level, county level, and then it's open to the public. Kerry's prepared a nice PowerPoint showing timelines for projects. And so that's typically what we do there, and so we have that meeting today at, from 5:00 to 7:30.
Good.
That's it.
I don't have any comments. Are there any board requests for future agenda items? There are none. Under the meetings, there's a bunch of them here, mostly Director Estrada. I want you to just take it from the top.
All right. Safe for advisory group meeting number two. That's, as you know, I've been part of that advisory group since 2019. It's a group of about 20 of us from across the state that work together with the, with the Water Board on setting policy and priority for SB $200. And that's our meeting number two. We have four meetings during the year. This one was Zoomed, the next one will be in person in Sacramento. And so that's, that's what we do in that meeting. The next meeting for LAFCO, we meet once a month. In that meeting, the main thing we did was work through redistricting and boundaries for recreation districts. That seems to be kind of the, the last batch of jurisdictions that, that we need to settle on. And I, interesting fact that I didn't know this, Desert Recreation District is the largest recreation district in California. And they're, they're huge. So I didn't know that, but now I do. So next meeting, meeting between CBWD and Cote d'Ivoire City. I was there with Director Aguilar and General Manager Barrett. And we, I think, talked about drought conservation. I know Scott was going to look into some stuff about rain, drought turf and things like that. And it was just an update on both sides on what we're doing. Next meeting, this was our two-on-two meeting with, between CBWD and IID. And so we went out to IID, President Powell and General Manager Barrett and I went out there to meet with them. And I think we had a nice chat, had said our goodbyes to Mr. Martinez. Said hi to our friend JB Hamby. And shared, talked a little bit about issues. The big one was about joining the Eastern Coachella Valley Energy Commission, which I think we've been successful in joining. So that was, that was good. We kind of gave them a heads up that we were going to try to do that. And then June 1st, okay, this is a meeting that we've, name of it keeps changing. At one point, it was like, almost like a technical team meeting. And, and now I think we're calling, it's called North Lake Pilot Project Demonstration Project. But, but we're talking to the folks under contract with Salt and Sea Authority through the county that are working on the project, and I think they're, they've been looking at water supply. And so there's some ideas on how to, how to use the ag drains. And so I think that's what we were talking about, was how to achieve that. And then I was not at the next meeting, so I think Director Nelson, you're up.
Sure. So the Colorado River Board meeting was held in Irving at the city council chambers, a very old and nostalgic facility there. Good. On, on Wednesday, the 14th, there was a tour with LEDWP. I did not attend that, but I attended.
Director.
I attended the, I attended the dinner that night on the 14th. It's interesting, LEDWP and MET are kind of dueling regional water quality recycling projects. So there was a tour of that on that day. But we heard about it at the CRB meeting and the tour and got kind of a rundown of all the things that LEDWP is doing with water conservation. And they're, they're really, they're, they're big, they put a tax measure on for flood collection. So it's kind of like where rain falls and you have cement, you pay a tax. And so it's kind of interesting, but they're generating a lot of money. And with that, they are putting a lot of flood control projects, hoping to capture rainwater and so forth. We approved the budget at the meeting, so it's up a little bit. I think it's up to around $24.4 million now. So that was that. At the Sixth Agency Committee, we also approved the budget and, and got that finalized. So we're all set.
Good. June 15th, Salt and Sea Authority.
I was not able to attend that.
Okay. We had a study session over in Romans.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I did attend that.
Go ahead.
Just because there's two Salt and Sea Authorities here. That was a special meeting that we called to provide a lot of the language that was provided as amendments to Senator's office. And so we voted on, on that language.
Yeah. Very good. We had a study session here in Romans on June 20th going over the class and compensation study. There were three of us there. Actually turned out to be, I thought, a good discussion at the end of that one.
And we'll follow that with a couple more. That was just a starter.
Yeah. Great. And we had a, June 21st, we had Agua Caliente meet and greet. Saw some of my old friends. They actually had the entire tribal council. There's five members of their council, so they don't have to wear their brown act. So they had them all there. Which I guess the second time we've met with them where they've had them all there. But I thought it was a really good meeting. It'll be interesting to see. They've had a little turnover, so you know, that comes with some new ideas. Not necessarily a bad thing.
And I was there too.
Yeah, you're right. June 22nd, LAFCO public hearing.
I was not able to attend that.
Okay. What else do we have? Salt and Sea Authority.
Same day, so I wasn't able to attend that.
Yeah, that was the one you didn't, okay. California Farm Water Coalition on the 26th, was yesterday.
Yeah, that was yesterday. That was held via Zoom. Good participation, lots of information about our social media campaign. The coalition just hired a new social media director, fresh out of Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo. And she's, as a lot of youths are, very good. And, um, she's, um, um, as a lot of youths are, very good at social media, so.
The thumbs work really well.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, so that, that was kind of the highlight of the.
Good. Uh, I did not make it to the DVBA meeting, although I almost did, but I didn't. Uh, SEBAG, uh, also the, yesterday evening, they had.
I also was not able to attend. Hopefully you were able to find a replacement.
Yeah, actually I attended and Victoria attended. Um, they had a pretty good turnout, they had.
Yeah.
I'd say over 200 people. I mean, there were 10 tops, and there were at least 20 of those, and then probably even more. But it's, uh, it's interesting to watch the interplay between the municipalities and, um, you know, there are quite some characters out there.
Competition.
Friendly competition.
No, I, you know, I just had too much going on yesterday, I kind of wanted to go to that because it sounded interesting.
I did too. I signed up, but then I got tied up.
Uh, a couple of others, we had, um, June 14th, we had a CURA, Colorado River Water Users Association, uh, board meeting, so we was having a board meeting, s- off, o- on the other side of the calendar, because our big meeting is in December, so that was, that was that. I guess we're going to be at Paris in Vegas in December, because Caesar's moved us. So, it's part of Caesar's.
Yeah.
And, um, we just developed our, our budget and, uh, and all that. It seems like, um, they're doing fine, and mostly it was financial that we talked about. Uh, also, um, and we mentioned it, but it, it was the same day as, as the meet and greet. We had this phone call with State Senator Padilla on the 21st, um, where we, three of us were on that, and Victoria was on there. Um, what else, any others?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple.
Good.
On June 19th, uh, the California Section Five Contractors had a Zoom call to discuss, um, um, paths forward, moving together with the other seven basin states, um, uh, which was, um, a good call. And, uh, looking really forward to the 2026 renegotiation since the SEIS was withdrawn. And, um, uh, so there's, um, you know, bigger issues to come, uh, for sure. And then, um, on the 22nd, June 22nd, there was the first consultation of the 24, uh, of the 2024, uh, annual operating plan. Uh, I missed about the first, uh, 25 minutes. And so, Robert, I don't know, I, I saw you were on there. I don't know if there was much discussion. In, in the past, on the first consultations, um, Chuck Colam has been, um, uh, a big voice in all the little edits that he tries to get in. Um, but, uh, by the time I got on, there was not one comment, which I thought was very unusual in a year like this when there's a lot of things going on. So, Robert, I don't know if, if there was in the first 20, 25 minutes or so, if there was, uh, any further discussion or much discussion.
I think the first 25 minutes was a lot of background.
Robert, can you come up to the mic, please, or else we won't capture your comments.
If you were just going to say no, that would have been okay.
Can you say no? More than no, we need to come up.
Thank you, Robert. We don't need you.
We do need you, but.
We need you, but we don't need you to tell us why it wasn't.
Yeah, so there was not much. Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
Uh, that's it for me.
All right, I, I have a, a few on, let's see, we'll start with the, so the 21st, we had the pre-call preparation for our call with the Senator. Kind of joined that late, it was right before the study session. So we had a pre-call, um, regarding our conversation we were going to have on the 22nd. Uh, no, on the 21st, so. The pre-call was the 20th. And then we had our actual call with the Senator on the 21st. Uh, on the 22nd, I was not able to make either the Salt Sea Authority meeting or the LAFCO meeting. Um, and that was because I was invited to, um, I was invited by the municipal president, it's the equivalent of a mayor, arch-city mayor. Uh, she's the mayor of Mexicali, and, uh, she reached out in her cabinet to invite me to, uh, they had a water forum at the Autonomous University of Baja California, so, uh, I went there to be with them. Uh, they had a forum, uh, on water, and what they did, it was, it was like an academic forum where they put some, um, uh, counterparts, academia counterparts from, uh, the University of San Diego, uh, and then a counterpart from the University of, uh, Autonomous University of Baja California. They had three conversations, so, uh, they had two and two and two on each of those conversations. And some of it was historical, historical issues on what they call the, uh, binational, uh, kind of hydrology, which is all tied to the Colorado River. Um, there was one on kind of all the updates that you've been given about the watershed, uh, and the modeling, and how that's, um, impacting both sides of, of the border. Uh, they talked about some of, uh, the projects like the lining of the All-American Canal, and how that's really impacted the hydrology in, uh, south of the border, specifically in Mexicali, as it's taken away all that natural recharge that was kind of being lost through the seepage. And so they've been able to model a lot of, uh, groundwater, uh, wells that have been impacted as a result of that lining. So it was very interesting to hear, yeah, it's, it's very.
Probably see the data.
They have, yeah, they have the data, uh, they've been monitoring water levels since they lined a lot of those, uh, canals.
Yeah.
Um, and so it was very interesting to hear how they view issues on the Colorado River from their lens, some of their issues, and, uh, and so, um, it was just, it was just very interesting. And so that's what I did on the 22nd. And I believe, other than that, oh, and I mentioned I had a meeting yesterday, a call with Salt Sea Authority and, uh, Riverside County regarding additional, uh, discussions regarding Padilla's bill, Senator Padilla. And that's it.
So, Casolo, was there much discussion about the infrastructure that moves, uh, the canal infrastructure that moves Colorado River water over to Tijuana? I, I, I know that, I, I had heard that Tijuana uses about 80,000 acre feet of, uh, water from the Colorado for municipal supplies and over there.
So, so they, they, they showed a lot of exhibits that, that, that did show, and I, I, I took pictures of it because it was all very interesting to me. Uh, I could try to get the slides. But they, they, they did show, um, call it the tributary of the river as it comes into Baja California, and then how it just spreads over a lot of different areas. And they, they said that a lot, a lot of that water actually makes its way to Ensenada, too. Small portion of it, but it goes all the way to Ensenada. Um, but, but there was, uh, there were, uh, breakdowns, pie charts of how much of the usage in Mexicali, for example, is related to Colorado River water, how much of it is groundwater, they do have some groundwater. And then how much of it is used by different sectors. Like, there was a big protest, uh, right before the, uh, start of the forum where, um, some folks pro- were protesting, saying, it's not an issue of a lack of water, it's an issue of, you know, where you're using the water. So, so there's a big fight between agriculture and, uh, call it industry.
No.
Just like you have everywhere else.
Let's move on.
Yeah.
Okay, any others?
That's it.
Uh, just, we had kind of forgotten the, on the 20th, we also had a quick meeting, Director Nelson and I, with, uh, Robert regarding Bucket Two and Golf Course Conservation. All right, is there a motion to approve per diem for the meeting's report?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass three oh. General Manager.
Yes, sir, just quickly, uh, there is a SCADA Master Plan Open House Celebration on the 29th from noon to 1:00 over in the, uh, what we used to call the Bigley Annex, which is actually the, uh, the building next to operations. Uh, other than that, I'll be out Thursday with an Aqua Region 10 event up in Oceanside. Uh, they've got a pure water plant that they're building up there. There's a couple other presentations from, from local Region 10 folks, which is basically the San Diego area. That's all I got, sir.
Thank you, Council.
I'll pass.
Okay, any department reports?
No, sir.
Hearing none? All right, at this time, the board recessed into closed session to consider items 13A through H, and then we will reconvene to report out, uh, of closed session after that. The regular meeting is reconvened, we do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.